Due to the nature of the allegation, this agency, Madison Police Department, proactively referred this case to the proper county authority as per NJ Attorney General Guidelines. Ms. Cromarty was stopped for and was issued summons for operating a motor vehicle while on the cellphone and also having tinted windows. The summons will be adjudicated in the Madison Municipal Court in the near future. Ms. Cromarty's allegations will be thoroughly and objectively investigated by the prosecutor's office to the logical conclusion. So hopefully that fills in some of the questions that people may have had. Moving on to more traditional things. My notes on the library. As I announced last time, the library has limited service hours through the month of October and into November at different times due to the construction and installation of the new HVAC system. So please check their website to confirm parking before you or confirm not only parking but their hours before you head on down. This Friday, Drew University will be inaugurating President Mary Ann Benniger. She has been there for over a year at this point, but now will formally inaugurate her. So we wish her luck. I will be representing the borough. I'm sure there'll be many others there. They plan this around Bottle Hill Day, as they've done the last couple of years. So there will be families coming into town. It's family weekend for Drew students and their parents. And of course, the fireworks will happen Friday or Saturday evening to culminate Bottle Hill Day. And also with Drew, I want to share a great announcement of a new program that came up through the partnership with the Borough of Madison and Drew as part of the Chief Executive Council for Madison. Drew University's International Student Services Department has created the Family and Friendship Program where Madison families are partnered with Drew international students for cultural exchange. Eight Madison families and eight students recently paired up. The families will meet their student a couple of times this semester and introduce them to local history and get to share, the student will get to share their local culture as they learn about America and we learn about the countries they are coming from. So this is a great opportunity for Madison residents to support Drew. If you would like to sign up, please reach out to Jim Burnett, our Assistant Administrator and Acting CFO. This program was started by the idea from Midori Tagawa, who was our first Drew civic scholar working here in the borough. So it's great to see this program and bring a higher level of international understanding. So I'm going to come on down to do a couple of presentations. Karen Jessie, are you here?
Yes. So I have a proclamation declaring the week of October 4th through 10th, Mental Illness Awareness Week. Whereas, mental illness is a term used for a group of disorders causing severe disturbances of thinking, feeling, and relating. And whereas, mental illness can affect persons of any age, sex, race, religion, social and economic background. And whereas, during the course of any given year, 5.5 million Americans are disabled by severe mental illness. And whereas, nearly two-thirds of all people with diagnosticable mental disorders do not seek treatment because of stigma, or ignorance, or lack of appropriate services and treatment options. And whereas, one in four adults experiencing a mental health problem in a given year, one in 17 lives with serious chronic illness. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2015, as Mental Illness Awareness Week in the Borough of Madison.
Thank you for, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'm the president of the Thursday Morning Club, Karen Jessie, and this is Carol Schussler, who's the Vice President. The National Alliance of Mental Illness is a special project that the New Jersey State Federation of Women's Clubs has for two years. And each women's club that's a member of that supports it in various ways. And one of the ways is try to educate more people to rid our society of the stigma of mental illness and to try to educate people more about the fact that people need support, families need support in dealing with mental illness issues.
You're per lead.
Thank you very much.
I think some of you have already have seen the article in the Madison Eagle a couple of weeks ago and in other publications. But these guys have done a special thing. On a hike, came across someone in distress. And of course, the Boy Scout motto of be prepared, they were prepared to help this person who who knows where may have been without the fact that you were there, ready to step in as good Samaritans. The tide was coming in, he was severely injured and needed to be brought to safety. And so, established in my first year as mayor was the Mayor's Hero Award for people that stepped forward in many different ways. As I've said over the years, all of us come across things on a daily basis. Not all of us have a chance to walk along a path and see someone in distress, but many people could keep on walking. It is special people that stop to deliver the help that they need. So we have the Mayor's Heroes Award for our four scouts here. Thomas Daley.
Thomas, thank you very much. Garrett Taylor. Garrett, thank you so much. And Matthew Adam, Adam Webb. I had this, sorry, Adam. Matthew, I had this perfectly earlier and now I've lost it, but Matthew, thank you so much for.
Adama Witz. I knew I could do it. Let me try, Matthew Adama Witz.
So thank you very much, Matthew. Anybody guys want to say a few words?
So when we were on the hike, so when we were on the hike, all four of us and a couple of adults were helping this man, he was 63 years old. And he was in distress and on the cliffside, he was, he felt, so he was trying to look by the tide pools. And he slipped off this ledge and he, we're pretty sure that he like destroyed his knee and he couldn't get back up and every time he moved it, he said it really hurt. And also, the tide was coming in, so basically if we haven't helped him, he would have probably died and probably wherever he is right now, he probably is very thankful for what we did.
Matt, Matt is very, very well said. Two more quick comments. My brother, one of my older brothers is alive today because of the actions of a good Samaritan, so you really have made a difference in truly in someone's life. The other thing is another story somewhat related to the members of our Troop Seven here is Thomas sent me an email, probably I think it was on September 12th or certainly very close to that, noting that the flags in Madison were not at half-staff on September 11th. So rather than just pose a problem, he offered also a solution, saying, "Troop Seven will take the leadership next year on September 11th to make sure the flags in Madison are at half-staff, not only for all those that died on that charging 9/11, but especially for those residents here in Madison." So thank you for stepping forward to do that. And thank you for everything we do.
Homework.
Homework.
You can go home and do your homework, but knowing scouts that are always prepared, I'm sure it was done beforehand, so if you want to work on your merit badge for civic involvement, you are welcome to stay for that too. So let's report from committees. Community Affairs, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. From the Downtown Development Commission, they are looking forward to Bottle Hill Day, which is this Saturday, October 3rd. The event will be bigger than and better than ever. It's going to feature five stages with all-day entertainment. The event runs from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., except for Kings Road area, which will be open until 7:00 p.m. and includes the main stage and Beer Garden. Also, they want you to save the date for Saturday, October 24th at 7:00 p.m. The Madison Cultural Alliance and the Downtown Development Commission Sidewalk Art Gallery Auction Gala is scheduled for that day. There are many beautiful pieces of art, and please go downtown and check them out on October 3rd. And there was an insert in the utility bills highlighting all the upcoming DDC and Chamber events. For the seniors, they're offering a 10-week Balance and Stability classes focusing on gait and posture using yoga blocks, balance rolls, stretch bands, and a metronome to assist with timing and balance. And the class has already increased from 10 participants to 16. They also have another class, which is called Stretch and Flex, which is very popular on Thursdays. And they also have classes on yoga, Tai Chi, and healthy bones. Seniors will also have a table at the Bottle Hill Day to educate the public about available services and programs. And that is it, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Canello.
I have no report time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go to Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrian.
No report.
All right. Health, Mr. Wolkowitz.
I'd like to start off by announcing that the Board of our Madison Health Department will be holding another flu clinic. I had mentioned that a couple of weeks back. They will be holding it at the Madison Civic Center on Wednesday, October 14th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And again, on the 21st, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. If you are covered by Medicare, please bring your card. Just a side note on this, you may have heard that last year, the vaccine for flu was not terribly effective. The way this vaccine is prepared is it's basically prepared on the basis of what happened the preceding year. But the early indications from the CDC are that this year's vaccine will be very powerful and quite effective. So I encourage all of you to line up on those Wednesdays and go for it. The other thing I would like to mention is the Madison-Chatham Coalition is a coalition that was put together to prevent and reduce youth substance abuse in the communities of both Madison and Chatham. And they do this via collaboration, education, and community-wide change. They've had a number of activities that some of you may have known about, or heard about, or participated in. They've really been quite busy, especially given the small amount of funding they have. But the good news is that small amount of funding continues to come in and will continue the program. The first year's mentoring grant was for $35,000. That ends in a couple of days, but it's been extended another two years and therefore will go on until September 30th, 2017. During this two-year period, the Coalition will apply for a full grant of $125,000 for a five-year period. So they're doing quite well, and I think this is a vote of confidence from those who distribute those grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, and if you also have utilities, Pat Rowe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Public Works, leaf collection will start on October 26th this year. Bags are available starting October 19th at the Borough Garage for all Madison residents. From the Engineering Department for the roads, Seffeli Construction milled the northern half of Ridgedale last week, and will pave that section this coming Wednesday. Reconstruction on the southern half is already underway, and we still anticipate completion of the work by the deadline of October 23rd. Announcements about road closings can be found on RoseNet or via Madison Nixal Alerts. Additionally, tonight, we should be approving submission of a state grant for requests for funding for Prospect Ave. We hope to complete this work next year as part of our 2016 capital program, and hopefully the funding from the state will provide meaningful contribution to our other capital programs. Paving of the Waverly Green parking lot was completed today. Striping will be completed in the next few days. Other than replacement and addition of some lampposts, which will be handled by our own electric department, the work will be finished this week. And finally, the Dodge and Memorial Fields work on the replacements of the lights at the basketball courts is scheduled to start later this week. From the Electric Department, they installed a new secondary cable on Greenwood Ave, replaced the damaged pole behind the Madison Plaza, installed new poles at Kings Road and Green Ave. And probably most importantly, on Saturday, there was a fairly large outage that impacted about half of the customer base, including the Downtown and Drew. The outage lasted about one hour. This problem was caused by a problem that JCPL experienced between two of their substations, which in turn took down one of ours. Our administrators are addressing this issue with our friends at JCPL. And from the Water Department, redevelopment work on Ewell is underway and should hopefully be completed in the next week or so. And finally, voluntary water restrictions remain in effect because of the exceptionally dry summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Onto Communications and Petitions.
None received, Mayor.
All right, this is our first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to items on the Agenda Discussion List, items 13, or resolutions that are consent agenda. The items we are discussing today are Strategic Planning Committee for Communications, our website preview, and also our 2015 Best Practices Inventory. So if you want to comment on either of those items or one of the resolutions, please step up the lectern, state your name, your address, and note the item you are speaking on, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. And seeing that, we close this part of the meeting. And again, Troop Seven, thank you for coming tonight, and Heroes, thank you very much for your work. Oh, we do have a speaker, sorry. Jump the gun on us, we have a scout who would like to say something.
Hi, my name is Tom Kiernan. I'm a Boy Scout. And I live by Lucy D., Wayne Boulevard. And I just have a question on the construction of Sayre Court, because it's kind of concerning me because of the roads. I do like the way it was, I'm just concerned like what is going on there.
With the narrowing of Sayre Court? The intent, for one, it was much wider opening than a normal road would have, which creates two problems. One, since it's a, within the block is Central Avenue School and several blocks from the high school, it's an extra-long crosswalk out of the norm. The other is it encourages, as you get to driving a car around, what people turn stop signs into yield signs because of a wide intersection that they'll come right up to Ridgedale and use that wide thing as almost as a merge lane as opposed to a true stop. So it was narrowed for those two purposes to create a more standard crosswalk and to hopefully reduce the non-stopping traffic coming off of Sayre Court.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For keeping us safe, I do appreciate it, because that is really a smart idea, because I lived there all my life and I've seen cars just don't stop, just come right through. I can understand how can that be safe. Thank you so much.
And so that's the intent, so hopefully it'll make a difference, so you can let us know how it does. And thank you again for coming out tonight.
Mayor, this may be a little out of turn, but we have our meetings on Monday night now. So we're trying to get back to get the last half of our meeting in, and we do appreciate you having the scouts down for the award tonight. My name is Richard Zipper. I have something to say also, but it may not be exactly in turn, probably should have waited till later.
Well, we want you to get to your, be able to get to your meeting, so we will give you a waiver tonight.
Okay, thank you. Richard Zipper, Greenwood Avenue. I read in the paper about three or four weeks ago that the police are doing some kind of a study as far as improving safety on the roads, pedestrian safety.
The Walk Safe Program?
Walk Safety, that could be it, yeah. And the first thing that came to my mind was the cars that park on Rosedale by the soccer Correct me if I'm wrong, but a number of years ago, they had no parking signs there, and I think everyone just ignored them, so they took the no parking signs down. I don't see why they can't park in the pool parking lot. And perhaps maybe a walkway could be created from the parking lot to the soccer field to encourage people to park in the pool parking lot. It's only a short walk, you know? And everybody does need as much exercise these days as they can get, so parking in the street on the bend there, that may be a way to make the road safer on Rosedale.
One of the things that we had done a couple of years ago, because what it was at one point was parking on the opposite side of the soccer field, which was, seemed really crazy to have people line up, park, cross their child on Rosedale, so it was flip-flopped over to the field side. So it should be, if I, my memory is right, it should be no parking on the opposite side, but now parking on the field side. But obviously, the safest would be using the parking lot so we can pass that on to Borough Engineers to look at it. We might be crossing wetlands with a walkway in that area, I'm not sure.
The one other issue is that field is lit and the parking lot isn't, so at night, it gets pretty dark over there, especially when you start turning the lights off. When you park on Ridgedale, you do have the advantage of having the streetlights, so it might be a challenge.
But we could look at the possibility of, you know, if you don't need to light the whole parking lot, but if it is just that end, so we'll put that and.
That's just what came to mind.
Yep, good, good point. Thank you, Richard. Have a good meeting tonight. Okay, seeing none other, we will move on to Agenda Discussions. Strategic Planning Committee for Communications. Maureen? Jim? And John?
A word of introduction?
Yes.
All right. I just want to indicate that this is the fourth committee to report, and that's as many strategic planning committees as we currently have. So at the end of this presentation, everyone will have had one opportunity to present what they've done. I anticipate we'll have many more meetings like this, where the committees will be reporting subsequent results. And the mayor had alluded to this. A treat of this one is that you'll get to see the prototype of the brand-new RoseNet. And with any kind of luck, you'll get to use the brand-new RoseNet in about a month. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Chair, Maureen Byrne.
Thank you, Mr. Wolkowitz. Just to rehash, the philosophy and, oh, I'd like to introduce.
The man who needs no introduction.
And Lisa Ellis, who were on the committee, along with Diane Mann and Fran Boardman. The committee met a number of times and came up with a philosophy and values that we thought should drive communications. That philosophy was that we should expand the involvement by the community in the workings of the government in order to get a broader cross-section of residents and an expanded human resource pool for governance and community development. That's a fancy way of saying, get more volunteers. It would increase opportunities for residents to get involved. The more they knew, the more they'd want to get involved. It would strengthen the democratic process. People would be, as we conceive the new RoseNet, minutes and video of these meetings will be up on RoseNet for people to see, and so people will be able to see their government in action and perhaps find themselves coming down to see it in person. And then, finally, deepening community relations so that in the event of a disaster or an emergency, we'd be better able to serve those residents. The survey that we did showed that 87% of the respondents agreed that the Borough Communication System should provide citizens with information they need to participate in a meaningful way. 60% of the respondents did not agree that communications about borough decision-making was open and two-way, indicating an area for improvement. 65% of the respondents said they did not receive sufficient information about borough matters so that they felt fully informed about what was going on. And 52% of the respondents agreed that borough decision-making processes were not open and clear. And that's not good. We represent the community, and the community should be able at any time to know what we're discussing, what we're talking about, and what's happening in their community. The survey also looked at how people would like to receive information. As you can see, meetings is the lowest on the totem pole. And at the bottom, RoseNet, Email, and Nixal Rule. So we decided that we would focus on RoseNet. The top three suggested improvements to RoseNet that were, was to revamp RoseNet, identify additional communication tools such as Nixal for non-emergency communications, and improve online bill paying. And I think with the revamped RoseNet, we do that. The committee recommendations was to make communications a priority and devote financial resources and personnel to make the necessary improvements. We can have the most beautiful website in the world, but if it's not updated in a timely fashion, it's of no use to the council and it's of no use to the community. So we need to have someone full-time working on social media for the town. Improve the online bill function, we talked about that already. Another Nixal version such as the, and I'm not at all overwhelmed by this one, the BOE Honeywell Alert System for non-emergency communications, such as Bottle Hill Day is coming up, Taste of Madison is coming up, school, open houses are available. The RoseNet TV broadcast on a loop should be initiated. Create a digital borough bylines newsletter and establish feedback tools with residents. So a progress report. Since we came to see you last, the Love Madison Facebook page has grown to over 2,900 likes. People are turning to Facebook to find out what's going on in Madison, and they're liking it so that they get the updates. Online bill utility pay is being revamped with a new payment platform, that's RoseNet. In addition, water and electric bills will be merged into one bill, and the estimated time for that is April 30th, 2016. And then, within the month, and this is something that I'm most excited about, the Construction Department will launch a public portal that will allow residents to track the construction permit application. So when you put in an application for a permit, you will be able to track that permit through the various stages and know when you're going to get it or if you're going to need a variance in a timely fashion. A website-focused group met over the winter and discussed preferences. Staff identified the preferred web designer and council approved the contract, and as a result, a new website is set to launch within the month. The new RoseNet will include a notify-me communication tool, which will allow residents to select what information they want to know, agendas, community news, things of that nature, and how they would like to receive it, by text or email. The Borough will launch a marketing program to promote this tool. The borough will launch a marketing program to promote this tool. The new RoseNet has survey tools so that we can communicate better with the community and track and report complaints and feedback from residents. A full review of the new site will be up next week, next month, but here's a sneak peek at the new RoseNet front page. So as you can see, the new page is very colorful. This photo here will be a series of rotating photos of the downtown and the rest of Madison. You've got, across the top, you've got the six most important from the survey areas that people identified that they wanted to get to the most quickly. So online billing, notify-me, trash and recycling, permits and apps, Madison Recreation, and Let Us Know. Over here is an area where we can talk about things that are coming up, again, like Bottle Hill Day, the MACA, DDC Arts Program, and a calendar. You'll be able to click on any date and see what's going on eventually, what's going on in Madison on that date. And next to that is meetings. So the farmer's market, the Environmental Commission meeting, the Borough Council meeting, the Bottle Hill Day, all of these will be there for you to see, and hopefully, seeing them, you'll attend them. So I'd really like to thank the council, the borough staff. The borough staff has been outstanding in working on RoseNet, especially Jim Sanderson, who's given us his IT expertise, and volunteers who helped to make this progress possible. Do we have any questions?
Actually, could you go back one slide again?
I'm sorry, what?
Go back one slide to the, because I think the one other thing that you should talk about is at the top where it says, "How do I?" Government Department.
Oh, yeah. How do I?
I'll talk about that more. So what we did with working with the focus group was to create multiple ways for people to get to the same information. Our current RoseNet, you have to know the department to then know where to get that permit, whether it's a road-opening permit, or block party, or what have you. You need to know that you need to go to the clerk.
This instance, you can click on "How do I?", and then there are kind of basic questions. How do I get a permit? How do I do this? How do I do that? So that's another way of people finding the information. So instead of just one way, there's multiple paths. Also, the search box here is much more prominent than it is on RoseNet, so you could go online and just type in "tort claim", and you could find the tort claim document instead of having to look all over the place for it, or road-opening, or block-party permit, you can find it. So there's really now three ways for residents to find it. They either go to the department, because they know they need to go to that department, or they go to "How do I?", or they go to the search button.
And also, and I was looking up RoseNet on my iPhone, so I might have missed it if you commented, but the fact that this is optimized for handheld.
For an app as well.
Yeah. So what ends up happening is, as you take this website, the larger website here, and you shrink it down, you can even shrink it down on your regular computer, it will automatically dynamically resize, and then ultimately, on someone's smartphone, it will look like the version on the far side. Clearly, you have to scroll, but the buttons are very accessible. All of the "How do I?" and "Notify Me" up at the top, not "Not Notify Me", but "How do I?" in departments, go into what you typically see in the upper-left corner, which is a little slashed line. You click on that, and the menus come across there. But the six most important buttons, as Maureen mentioned, online bill pay, notify-me, recycling, all those, they stay, and they stay on every page. So as you're moving around, if you are someplace else, you say, "Oh, wait a minute, I want to look up recycling", you'll find it there. You'll be able to get it one.
You wouldn't have to go back to the, you wouldn't have to go back to the front page. Those six buttons carry through the entire website.
Pat, you had another?
No, that was just, I just wanted to be sure that we covered that, because there was a couple of things that I thought were interesting features.
So just to the council on those, the next steps are, next week, Civic Plus, the company that we hired to do the web design, will have their staff here on-site training. It's kind of like behind-the-wheel with Civic Plus, I guess, where you're there and your hands are on the keyboard, and they're teaching the various departments how to update their websites. There will be a limited number of staff that can update their websites to continue continuous look between all the various pages there. Police, Health Department, Community Affairs, others will have access. Other departments, like the electric utility itself, will have a static page. If they want changes, they'll go to IT. That'll happen for the next four days. The staff are currently looking at the new website, making sure the information there is up-to-date in the way they want it to be, hoping to launch this. Have then a marketing plan that would follow to engage the residents and get them to sign up various communication tools that we have.
Ben?
You might also want to mention how a resident would be able to communicate with various parts of the borough government if they have any issues.
They can go directly to Let Us Know.
And that'll take you to individual departments.
And that'll take you to individual departments.
Thank you.
And as Maureen said, if you go to the page, you can immediately communicate. Click on Let Us Know, that is going to open up a module that says, "I want to tell you about something, I want to tell you about a pothole, I want to tell you about a concern. We're looking at the possibility of letting residents know if your power goes out, don't call 911, don't call 593-3000, go to the website and notify us, and then we'll have a full listing of every home that's without power." So it makes it a little easier for those types of communications, and then allows us to track and see how quickly.
Pat?
One other question on the notify-me. Does that have a phone option? I don't remember.
Yes.
Well, text.
It has a text option and an email option. However, we're looking into, once we get that instituted, to probably upgrade to what I would call a dial-out kind of Honeywell system, which we could use for emergencies. Like, the great thing about this communication tool is that we can go on there and click on an intersection, let's say the intersection of Academy Road and Greenville Road, and say, "I want to notify people in a radius of just 300 yards from here, or 500 or 800 yards or 1,000 yards", and it will go into the database. If someone put their, George Woody put in that he lives on Academy Road, and he put his contact information, George would be notified, and other people that live on Academy would be notified, but someone living on the other side of town wouldn't get that notification because it's hyperlocal. Hey, we're going to be paid. Has that ability, so we're not sending out these communications to the entire town when only a small section of town needs to know that.
And notify-me, I think, allows you to set up how you want to be contacted, whether it's email, text, phone, all the above, some of the above.
Email or text, I don't think.
Well, when we go to the, if we go to an audio option at some point.
I'm not sure the audio option will notify you and say, "There's a new agenda for the DDC."
Okay.
That notification option is one we need to push out.
Okay, that's still good, because I think there's still people in town who are not connected digitally. It's still audio-only, so I think that'd be helpful.
All right. Great work. Looking forward to going live. As we said here, educated residents are best citizens, so this is taking long ways to make that happen. All right, 2015 Best Practices Inventory. Robert?
This is the fourth year that all municipalities are required to submit best practices worksheets. This year, as in last year, there were 50 questions. Those 50 questions are in five different sections, the first of which is general management. There's 11 questions there. The second is finance and audit, there's 11 there also. The third is procurement, of which there's five questions. The fourth section is budget preparation, which has 12, and lastly, personnel, which also has 11. Of those 50, we were able to answer yes, not applicable, or prospective to 45, which are all considered to be yes answers. A minimum of 41 yeses is necessary to receive 100 percent of state aid, which we will meet. Of the five that were answered no, two were in general management, one was in finance and audit, zero in procurement, and zero in budget preparation, and two in personnel. Of the two in general management, questions numbers seven and eight deal with, our overall contracts average 2 percent or less. The reason we have to answer no to that is because the increments push us over the 2 percent. The question number eight in general management dealt with National Flood Insurance Program, Community Rating System, and does our municipality have a rating system of at least Class 9? Well, we're not eligible since we're not in the flood area, so we have to answer no to that. Question number 15, which dealt with finance and audit, number 15 was regarding, was there an audit finding that, in the 2014 audit that we had in 2013, the answer to that is, we have to answer no, because we did have a repeat, which is in the area of segregation of duties, which we hope to remedy next year. Question number 40, which dealt with personnel, was regarding the Fair Labor Standard Act, and the main question is, does your municipality refrain from paying overtime to employees who are classified as exempt under the FLSA? We have to answer no to that, because one employee in the court system is receiving overtime. And then lastly, question number 46, which is in personnel, deals with workman's compensation, and the question is, does your municipality limit benefits for work-related injuries to statutory benefit of 70 percent of their employees' weekly wages? And we have to answer no to that, because all of our union contracts pay full salary when an employee is on workman's compensation. Our borough attorney has previously opined that this issue is, in fact, a negotiable item, and it was addressed in the recent IBEW contract, and will be pursued in the future collective bargaining positions with the other employee groups when those contracts expire. Questions?
Any questions, Robert? Comments? Good. Good night, Tom. Thank you. All right, there are no ordinances for hearing, because we didn't have the full two weeks in between meetings, so the ones that were introduced at our last meeting will be heard on October 14th. And now we go on to the second of two invitations for discussion, that you may discuss anything you want, not limited to items on the agenda. Anyone wishing to discuss anything, please step forward. Seeing none in our crowded audience, I close this part of the meeting. And we go on to introduction of ordinances. Borough Clerk, please read the statement.
The ordinances scheduled for first reading have a hearing date set for Wednesday, October the 14th, 2015. They'll be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I called ordinances for first reading, ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 50, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $12,800 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of three historic lampposts.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 50-2015. I second it. Any council discussion?
Where are they going to go? And what do they look like?
Waverley Green.
Black post with the historic.
Gotcha. Use the mic, yep.
Two of the lampposts are going to go to the Waverley Green parking lot in the median, and that was paved today, by the way, and hopefully it's being striped this evening as we talk, weather permitting, and it'll be available for Bottle Hill Day. And one lamppost will go into inventory. We normally try to carry at least two, because they're, it takes six to eight weeks to get, and people tend to knock them down.
And if I understand, at least a few years ago, they were called the Bottle Hill Lampposts because they were designed many years ago, and now they're sold that way, so they're across the country. Any kind of that? Yeah, I guess probably not.
Trademark?
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 51, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $52,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a vehicle and related equipment for the Police Department.
Mayor, I move ordinance 51-2015.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 52 is pushed to the next, do we need to retire that number, or we can just?
We'll pull it from the agenda.
Yeah, we'll pull it, and that will be introduced in the next meeting. So we move on to consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move R. 274 through R. 280.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes, except for number 279, for which I have to abstain.
79, okay. Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Great, there is no unfinished business. Approval vouchers.
Public safety, $19,988.68. Health and public assistance, $6,125.92. Public works and engineering, $82,120.36. Community affairs, $12,904.05. Finance and Borough Clerk, $43,857.34. And utilities, $1,028,895.62. Total is $1,193,891.97.
Mayor, I move the vouchers.
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
No, new business.
With that, I move, we adjourn.
Thanks, Matt. Tell him to stay home more often.
Wow.
Every time John Seearwee comes in the clock.